All right, we'll go ahead and begin. I'll rise for the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now you'll notice the table is a little bit light, but a quorum has been established. We'll go with roll call. Mr. Robertson.
Here.
Mr. Ferris.
Here.
Mr. Rosma is absent. Mrs. Hopkins is absent, and Mr. Jansma is present. The agenda is sitting in front of you, and I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So move support.
Motion by Robertson, supported by Ferris, to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor will say aye. Aye. Those opposed, three zero. Communications and correspondence. Did anybody receive anything this, in the last three weeks?
Uh, not pertaining to that.
Pertaining, okay. I did receive an email from Mr. Draper with some information that I have yet to go through, but I will before we hit June, as my life finally slows down just in time to speed back up. So, but I will get there, which brings us to number six, presentation by McKenna. So without any further ado, go ahead.
All right. You guys mind if I use that chair up there?
Go for it.
That's fine.
We don't bite.
We can sit closer. It's a very limited group there. It's a public input.
Well, good evening everybody. I'm Jeff Kisa from McKenna. And I've met, I think, most of you or seen most of you, but just want to thank you all for hiring us to do the master plan update and to help you off some zoning ordinance stuff as well. And yeah, tonight, we're here to kind of just get things kicked off. And so I did send Steve this agenda, if we want to work through that. It's kind of what I am planning on for tonight. So for the first item, we have a notice of intent to plan. Whenever you start to do a master plan process, you have to notify public entities and joining townships that you're going to do that process. We have just started, I sent Steve a copy of just a sample letter that we were sending out to the Oceanic County Road Commission today. But we are, we are sending letters out to notify people in this area that Newfield Township is intending to plan. So number one is, we can check that off our list. That's done. So the second item, a document, I have the, I have a copy of the last master plan that was originally written in 2009 and then also updated in 2014 and 2019. But if you guys have a Word document of that, that would be really helpful to get us started because, you know, we can, we can convert this document from a PDF to a Word document, but it, it can sometimes mess things up. So if, if you guys can locate and find a copy of that, that would be awesome. Then as far as the third item goes, the steering committee, members and meetings. So is Steve commissioned? Do you all have a sense of who the steering committee will be? Will it be the planning commission?
Yes.
Okay, that's easy enough.
That was great.
Do, do you see adding any other people to the steering committee, DDA or Chamber of Commerce, anybody? Okay, so the planning commission and the zoning administrator. And then we have contracted to do the... So we've contracted to do three meetings, and that's going to kind of depend on how you guys want to set those up. I have listed out in, in section five, these are kind of some visioning session groups that we could do, the planning commission, the township board. Do you guys, do you guys have a DDA?
No.
Okay, so you can cross that out. And then township staff. But are there any others that you can?
It probably would make sense, in terms of that, to have our business owners engaged with that.
Yep.
You know, we have agricultural firms, we have excavating companies, we have a couple gravel and sand companies, propane companies. And I think it would make sense to have, have those folks involved.
Sure. So, yep. So the planning commission has how many, five members?
Correct.
Okay. How many people on the township board?
Five.
And is there any overlap? Just right, right? All right. And then township staff.
I'm staff, Dennis, our sexton would be staff, but everyone else is on the board.
I'm staff.
And then.
Well, you're here, you're here too, Steve.
But there's overlap, okay. So three, so that, yeah, I mean, I will let you guys kind of decide how, you know, how we want to set that up. But if you wanted to sprinkle some business owners at each, at each session, you know, that might be, that might be a decent way to do it. Or you could have a whole entire session with business owners and really focus that session on the discussion around, you know, how can we make, you know, business easier for you to do business in the township? And, and things of that nature. What are the impediments to doing business in the township? You know, what, what can we do better than that kind of thing? So, okay. I think that's a really good idea. Any, any other, I mean, you know, as far as city staff goes, would you guys invite people like school district officials or?
We could extend the, extend the invitation if anybody should have been.
So I think the other, the other group that would be wise to, to get on board somewhere within that is, is people in housing.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, it's, it's been pretty clear that housing is a very critical identified need in the township, in the county for that matter. But, you know, as, as you're talking about planning, obviously housing is a...
Absolutely.
Is a, is a big issue within that. And, and your, your planning and your zoning determining is possible in terms of housing.
Is there a Newfield Township staff whose sole responsibility is housing, private, right?
Well.
That's not your sole responsibility.
No.
But I'm just trying to get that, who would it be, somebody at the county? Is there somebody at the county who represents or?
No, we have a, we recently combined the county housing commission with the nonprofit housing organization.
Okay.
And, and that's now called the Dogwood Community Development. They... They're not exclusive to the county anymore, which is kind of a sad thing.
Yeah.
But they are only local affordable housing developer.
Okay. That should definitely be somebody to invite even, um, members of the clergy in the town. You know, anybody you can think of. So as I'm looking at, I hate to skip around, but as I'm looking at the agreement, in section two, we have the kickoff meeting tonight, we have two community open houses, and then we have one master plan stakeholder focus group with the planning commission. How does it, I'm thinking that inviting those people that we're identifying, it fits more into that master plan stakeholder focus group.
Absolutely.
Okay, okay.
Planning commission, yes, that, that, they need to say yes or no.
Yeah, no, that, that makes perfect sense to me.
Okay.
Because they are the, they're the stakeholders.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. Then, so back to, kind of back to that, we need to, we'll need to get some dates for this. Planning commission meeting is super easy. We just schedule them when you guys meet. The community open houses, I know Steve, we talked about all the way back in whenever it was, November, December, something like that. But we, we, we talked about doing one kind of like during the week, during the daytime, and then maybe one in the evening or on weekends so that we make sure that we get first and second shifters and weekend and mid workers.
As, as wide as that as we can cast, I think is, is advisable.
Okay. So, yeah, I, we, I can be flexible on dates for those. But... It would probably be up to you guys to kind of decide, you know, when that fits and where we'll have them. We could have one maybe at the library, the community room at the library.
I would think more maybe the school. One of the things I think is important to do is part of that, to get people out, because you want to get people out.
Yep.
And again, as wide as that as you can, is having food.
Yes.
Food brings people out. I mean, it's just how it is.
It is, yeah.
So, given that, I don't think the library would probably be real excited about that.
Okay.
However. It would take up a lot of space in the community room too, to have the food set out there and have them.
Yeah. But I would think that we could do that at the school.
Yeah.
And, and then that would not be problematic in that manner.
Okay.
You know, we could, what's the, is it called now Pig Slice or whatever? Yeah, you know, they could, we could, it's a pizza place. And it's right, just about right across from the school.
Awesome.
Works real well.
What would be, would you want to do just two there, or do you want to pick a second location? I mean, it's a small town. Sometimes when we go into communities, we'll do like north side, south side, you know, that kind of thing, but it doesn't.
So the big difficulty with the school is it would be in the cafeteria or one of the gyms, which are not air conditioned. So in the heat of the day, in the middle of the summer, that would be, that would be a drain.
It goes to the, to the, my next question is, do we want to do those after the summer? With, with my concern being that where the kids are going to be out of school in what, about three weeks, four weeks?
Yeah, just about, yeah, four weeks, yeah.
And then people start heading out on vacation. You know, so again, some of the people are the most impacted by these things, which are families, are not going to be around.
True. During the week, maybe, on the weekend, maybe not, not right.
Yeah, you know, so I'm, I'm just, I'm just thinking, you know, again, with the idea of maximizing, maximizing participation.
Yep.
That those public events should be in, in the early fall.
So then maybe we do the master plan stakeholder focus group with the planning commission.
Yeah, I, there's, yeah, I would, I would think that's a...
And then I would caution, just a little bit, waiting too long to do, to start the public engagement. But I do see the concerns about weather and vacation and stuff like that. But maybe even if we could get one before the summer's over, then do the second one in September, we could have all of our public engagement done, that, that part of it by September. So it's just something to think about, but those community open house dates, you know, should come from you guys when you, when you, and we can negotiate that. I'm, I'm flexible, so. Anything more about, any other things to talk about, about the visioning sessions or anything? Number six, we included this in the proposal, but we can do optional urban design renderings. There is an extra fee, and I think it's something about like two or $3,000. But we could come up with some, you know, give you guys some downtown design features. We could give you guys some housing features, you know, some drawings for housing. And that, again, completely optional, doesn't have to be, doesn't have to be done. We're, there are going to be drawings in the master plan, there are going to be drawings in the zoning ordinance. But if you guys said to us, hey, we want, we want to see some housing types that would fit in Newfield Township for new, new builds, we could do that for you. So that one is as needed, and we can talk about that one, so. Number seven, redevelopment ready. I haven't, I guess, I read through this like early on in the contract, but I haven't, I don't know if you guys are RRC, but we will definitely tailor the master plan to make sure that you will be RRC. And that's just as simple as putting in to the goals, verbiage and language that the state of Michigan wants to see. It's, it's on the website. If you guys are interested on the RRC website, they'll, they'll want to see different things.
Jeff, why don't you go through what RRC is for?
Absolutely. RRC stands for redevelopment ready communities, and that's a state of Michigan program where you can get additional funding for projects from the state of Michigan if you are RRC ready. So what that means is, in your action, in your goals and your action items in the master plan, we'll kind of hit some language that checks the boxes for RRC qualifications. And then when you guys decide, hey, we want to apply for a, you know, bike trail grant, state of Michigan will say, well, you know, do you have this in your master plan? And you can say, yes, we do, on page 17, and it's right here, you know? That's what, the grant process with the state of Michigan is going more into that. They want to see it in the master plan. You know, they want, they don't want, you know, just me to come up with a great idea, we need a swimming pool, right? And, and apply for a grant. They want to see that this is a goal of the community. So we'll be very careful to draft the goals and action items so that they're redevelopment ready. And then if you guys are interested, we've, we've helped communities do MDNR parks and rec grants. I'm working with St. John's right now to do a RAP grant application, which is a redevelopment grant. They're going to do some, they're going to apply for a grant to do some work to their downtown, turn some parking lots into more modern uses and that kind of stuff. So, you know, that's, that is not here to make a sales pitch, but in the future, if you guys wanted some assistance with, with grants, you know, after we get redevelopment ready, we can do that as well. Number eight, the community outreach survey. These are really helpful in a lot of communities. We've also had some communities where 37 people answer, and it's only a little bit helpful. So what we want to do with the community survey, I'll build it, I'll send it to you guys to look over, and you can make any changes or additions or subtracts. And then we'll talk about when we're going to send it out. And I'll, we'll make up some flyers, probably put them around at like, you know, the library. The school will be closed in the summer, so that won't really help. But we can find different places around town to advertise it. And what we will do is we'll build it so that it has a QR code, and you can, you know, just take the survey on the phone or, or also, you know, you can take it on your computer as well. In addition to that, we'll also put some paper surveys probably here. And I don't know why I keep saying the library, but probably the library too. Wherever you guys think it's a good idea, we'll put some paper surveys out and we'll let people know there are paper copies available. Because not everybody's, you know, wanting to take a survey on a smartphone. And we don't want to eliminate people of an age that don't have a smartphone or don't have a computer, so.
Jeff?
Yes.
I'm just wondering if we could bring this, the summer tax bills will be going out shortly.
Absolutely, yeah.
And perhaps we can put that in with the tax bills and, yeah.
Do you know when those go out?
I want to say they go out in October. It's either the middle or the end of June.
Hopefully it's the end of June.
Um, I'll, let's, can we, can we, when you, yeah, can we look into that a little bit more? Because that would be, that's better than, another thing we do, we use US Post Office. They do a thing called every door direct mail. You guys are probably familiar with this. And it's like a low cost mailing to everybody in your town. But yeah, sending it out with the tax bills, that would be, that'd be the way to go.
Yeah, then, we've had some mailings using that service with USPS. And the problem with that is the way the zip code works, you're going on zip code.
Yep.
So because the Asbury zip code goes all the way out to Perry, you wind up with a whole lot of in and out, actually even into out of township. You wind up with, yeah, a lot of folks who aren't in Newfield Township.
Yeah, 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 okay.
A lot.
That makes sense. Well, let's, if you, if you can check into that, Steve, and find out when that date is for the summer tax bills, I will jump on the survey and get promotion going for that too. And we can try to get it out. I think that's a great idea. That would, that would save us a bunch of money too, so. So what does the survey look at? We're looking at things like housing, transportation, parks and rec, economic opportunities. But you guys really can sort of tailor this to needs that, that you want as well. I'll come up with a draft, and like I said, you guys can review it and, you know, ask a few more questions about housing, or ask this question, or change that, and that's fine. We will, we'll get that, we'll make that happen. There is also going to be a website for the master plan project itself. We don't have that built yet, but it's going to be, it'll, it'll have a simple name like newfieldplan.com. And people can go to that, link to the survey while it's open, and learn about the master plan process, where it's at, in stages. I mean, we can, you know, upload things as we go. And typically what we will do is, we kind of do what's called a 50% plan, and then a 75% plan, and then the whole plan. The 50% plan is basically like the demographics and the action plan and the goals. That's, that's the 50% plan. And we can, you know, when that is reviewed by you guys and, you know, you're okay with it, we can put that up on the website, and then people can go and look at that in that stage. So that's, that's something that will, that's a part of the public outreach. And we'll have that website on the flyer for the survey as well. Typically, the survey stays open for about a month. If we have low response, we can keep it open longer. But as soon as we get a bunch of good responses, we can start drafting the summary. So, you know, it's best if it's not open like until August. And then number nine, GIS data and mapping. Do you, do you guys know about, like, does Oceanic County have GIS data for the township? And is that something, I mean, is that something you guys need to request or?
Oh, no.
No, it's all available online.
Awesome.
Right from the county's website.
Awesome. Perfect. Okay. Any questions about the, any questions about what we covered here?
Strangely enough, seems pretty straightforward.
Awesome. Good deal. That's what we want.
Like, I've got a question of whether we're, are we overlapping with the village master plan then? I mean, are we, are we going into the village and?
Well, they, they're the superseding authorities, so I would not believe so.
No, the, the village, we actually talked to Mike and Joyce about doing something combined. And you can't, the requirements for a village are just so different than, than what's required for a township. That it just, it just doesn't really work.
Yeah.
Be nice if it could.
So basically, our master plan is going to end at the village's limits.
Right.
Okay.
It's correct.
Right. I would, wait. What I... Yeah.
Necessarily apply.
Sure, sure.
What I would say though, is that we do want to get, you know, obviously people in the village are also Newfield Township residents.
Correct.
And what I would say is, you know, obviously we want to get as much improvement as we can from them as well.
Well, I understand as far as parks and rec.
And I was just, I was thinking that even in terms of like, when we're talking about business owners, that would be a bad thing to...
Well, they'd like to see improvements that would bring to their business.
Absolutely.
Right, I understand that part.
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to just briefly go over this, and I think pass out copies, but just so we're all kind of on the same page. This is the professional services agreement. So we agreed on the 21st of February, back when it was cold, that, that McKenna would perform a master plan update and zoning ordinance update. The scope of services, the above services and tasks and, and products are specified and described in the proposal to the township by the consultants. And so meetings, kind of talked about this a little bit, but we're doing the kickoff meeting with the planning commission tonight. We are going to be gathering dates and location and then doing a major public outreach to get the word out. You guys are all going to help us, do you think? For some community open houses. And then I think we decided the first thing, actually, we would do the master plan stakeholder focus group with the planning commission, and that would be those people that we identified, like business owners, school district officials, housing individuals, you know, clergy would be great. Anybody you can think of that, that has a state in this town. So then we will do two master plan draft review meetings. And again, that's, kind of mentioned that, but we'll have that 50% draft, and then we'll get to that 75% draft. I'll be right back here with you guys to, to go over that. And we can go over it in fine, fine detail. That's, that's totally fine. But we'll have two of those meetings. After the 50% draft, you'll say to me, we want these things included, or take these things out, or mention this, or don't say that. And then same thing with the 75% plan, and we'll get to a full, full draft. So up to four master plan adoption process meetings if we need those. That, that again is, is revisions. You guys want to see more things in? And so we can, we can continue to revise until we get it, get it right. Act three, zoning ordinance draft review meetings. Done this with a few towns, and it's a little bit of a painful process, but it's rewarding. We, we kind of go section by section. We'll talk about, you know, in the zoning ordinance, you know, where signs can be, for example, and where they can't be, and what condition they should be in. And we'll sort of look at that section and kind of hash it out and add things, take things out, make sure that it's matching this master plan that we are drafting. So we'll have three zoning ordinance draft review meetings to kind of get that really tight. And then two zoning ordinance adoption process meetings. And the, a stakeholder visioning session. And, and actually, these are reviews, I'm sorry. So we already had the two public engagement workshops. So that's what we have. Um, so that's what we have for meetings. And then the scope of the entire project, uh, was forty-three thousand dollars. That's for the master plan update and the zoning ordinance update. Um, that is going to keep you guys in compliance with the state or the master plan, uh, current master plan and help with the, uh, help the zoning ordinance to match that. You guys have any questions about, about the contract?
So H and I, excuse me, H and I are just repeats of B and C.
Okay.
I acknowledge.
Um.
I thought it odd that they basically, just different words for the same thing.
Same thing, yeah.
Okay.
So it'll look like you guys think it should?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So one of the things that we do, um, to start the master plan process is we look at the demographics of the community because without knowing that, we don't know who lives here and, and what they, uh, what they behave like. So, um, I just kind of did a really quick uh, review of, of the census data for Oceana, I mean, for Newfield Township. Um, and total population, we're showing two thousand seventy-eight. Um, nine hundred and forty-six males and eleven hundred and thirty-two females, so you guys are outnumbered. Um, and. Uh, let's see, average age, do I have that on? Um. Median age, forty-six years old. So, um, and there are four hundred and seventy-six people under the age of eighteen, which is twenty-three percent of the township. Um, so, and as you guys probably know, uh, a pretty, a pretty wide mixture of ages, age groups here in the township. Uh. It is a predominantly white township, ninety-six point seven percent. Um, there are some African-American individuals and some Asian and Native American individuals, but not many. Um, so we're looking at mostly a, a white population with an average age of forty-six. Um, and then housing units. So the first time I talked to Steve, um, he expressed to me that, um, the need for new housing and quality housing in the township. Um, and that's not, uh, new or different, everybody's sort of having that right now. Um, in America, we, uh, we do well with single-family homes and we sort of do well with like, you know, inner-city apartment buildings, uh, but what we don't have is called, anybody know what it is? Cluster housing, missing middle housing, because it's missing. That would be things like duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, small apartment buildings and things of that nature. Um, we really don't have that, uh, in, in this country that well, and if you think around the township, probably not a lot of that going on around, around the township, it's sort of single-family rural residential, right? Um, but as we're looking at this, uh, master plan update, we may want to identify some areas of the township for potential growth for housing. Um, and, and as we're looking at that, then looking at what type of housing? You know, is it, is it going to be more single-family residential on acre lots? Um, is it going to be single-family neighborhood on, you know, smaller lots? Um, or are we gonna have a mixture of duplexes and things like that available? So, um, total housing unit, so remember, total population is two thousand seventy-eight. Total housing units in the township is one thousand one hundred and forty-nine. Occupied housing units, seven hundred and thirty-four. Vacant housing units, four hundred and fifteen. Um, and. Out of the, uh, so here you go. Out of the eleven hundred and forty-nine housing units, eight hundred and eighty-three are one-unit detached units, so single-family homes. That's seventy, roughly seventy-seven percent, so about seventy-seven percent of all housing units in the township are single-family homes. And that's typical, again, um, it's, it's typical, it's, it's not just here. Um, but as we're doing this, you know, we may want to think about, um, allowing for some of that missing middle housing. And again, optional, we, we have some designers who can draw some housing types that would fit right in here like, look like they've been here, you know, all along with the rest of the places, so, um, that's an option. Um. So then if we look at the age of housing, um, I am showing built twenty-twenty or later, zero. But this was twenty-twenty-one data, so I know Steve's had some new, some new units go in, um, you guys have, but, um, most of the housing is sort of, um, aging. Uh, we have a hundred and eleven units, for example, that were built before nineteen thirty-nine. Um. And, uh. That, that's literally ten percent of housing units built before nineteen thirty-nine. And then, um, the biggest category, uh, would be nineteen seventy to nineteen seventy-nine, we have two, nineteen percent of houses, um, were built in nineteen seventy to seventy-nine, so roughly, how old am I? Yeah, uh, it's, it's getting up there in age, there, those houses are getting close to fifty years old. Um, and there was in the two thousands to two thousand nine, a hundred and eighty new units. Um, nineties, a hundred and sixty-six. But, um, you know, housing's getting older, um, and, and it's, it's of one type mostly. So having some different options. Um, you know, an older adult who's a single person, they may not need a whole entire single-family home, you know, or even somebody who's, uh, unmarried and starting out in life and getting their first big job, they may not need a single-family home as well, so having options for those people, uh, good stuff.
Jeff, that, I'm guessing that that is taking into account the village as well. Against those numbers, because if I'm looking, if I'm getting that right, you've got a couple hundred, uh, multifamily units, and the only reason, the only area where I could see that being in place in the, in the village where we have one, two, three multifamily developments.
Okay.
And a couple of single-family homes that have been subdivided into multifamily.
Okay. Well, there's only one in our township's side of the village, would it take the whole village or would it split, would it be?
It may wind up putting the whole village in there because I can't, I, I think, uh, I can't see that many, um, you know, I guess there's some questions, like, um, we have some resorts, you have, say have a dozen cabins or something like that, you know, if those are being, if those are being included as a multifamily.
Right.
Unit, um, because it just, I mean, that plus America would probably use some, but we just, we don't have them, yeah, um.
Okay.
Yeah, right, just the other two are on the other side, yeah.
Uh, one strong number for you guys, um, owner occupied housing, anybody have a guess at what it is?
Oh, I do, I do.
What, what do you got?
Eighty-three percent.
Eighty-nine percent owner occupied, that's very strong, and that's, that's a, you know, we, we all know, or we all assume uh, that when people own their home, um, that they're going to care for it better and they're going to, you know, do better things for it. Um, so ninety percent of your, uh, housing units being owner occupied, that's strong.
Does it, it, sorry for the interruption, but protocol wasn't introduced at the beginning of the meeting, I didn't know that question. Pardon the interruption, but of that high percentage of owner occupancy, does it further break down whether they are one hundred percent homesteaded or the transient snowbirds?
It doesn't say that, no. That, uh, no.
Okay.
But.
It's hard to rustle up that many people actually for year-round participation.
Sure, sure, I can understand that.
On, on the average discussion though.
Yep. Uh, it's something we've kind of highlighted on, so as owner occupied is a strength, renter occupied is sort of a weakness here, um, there are eighty-one units that are renter occupied or eleven percent of all housing units. Um, some more rental housing in the area, uh, could, could help that out a little bit. Um, I'm not gonna get into what kind of fuel people use and that kind of stuff. The median home value in dollars, anybody have any guesses?
Great replacement cost or median home value?
Yeah, what's the number, throw a number.
One hundred and twenty-six thousand.
Very close, a hundred and twenty thousand nine hundred. Yep. So, uh, yeah, it's pretty close, but you went over, so yeah, just kidding. Um.
Price is right rules.
And I, I, I did check that to see where it was in like two thousand ten or anything, but, um, man, housing prices are going up everywhere, I'm sure it's, it's going up here as well. Um, issues with new housing, um, raise your hand if you've seen new housing advertised for a hundred fifty thousand dollars, small little two, three-bedroom bungalows. It doesn't exist, new housing is five hundred thousand dollars or three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There isn't new housing really being built in that small bungalow worker-type housing, it's not happening anymore. Um, so, you know, trying to maybe think about that type of housing as well. Um, you know, instead of, uh, the five hundred thousand dollar brand new houses, maybe there's an option to even zone an area for housing with no more than three bedrooms or no more than certain square feet or something like that.
We, we do have, uh, um, we do a lot of tiny homes.
Yeah.
A couple of years ago, uh, we dropped our minimal acres in, in our AR one to two acres and, uh, we also dropped our minimum square footage to two hundred and forty square foot to accommodate tiny homes.
Okay.
With that in mind.
Yep, that's great, that gives you, gives you a whole other option. There are places, there's a place, there are many places, but there's a place in, uh, Oregon that I, that I, um, learned a lot about that they made a whole entire tiny home village. Um, they had like a community center in the, uh, in the, in the middle, you know, so that people could, um, but it gave, it, this particular place gave people who had never been homeowners, never thought to be, you know, achieve that, uh, it gave them the chance to own something because tiny homes are more affordable. So, again, when someone's a homeowner, the assumption is they're going to take care of that home, um, and so, yeah, that, that.
Do you have the, the number there of manufactured homes?
Might actually, hold on one second. And I can leave these with you guys too, to look over some more, um. You know, it might, uh, I could probably, I could probably search for that. Uh, but I don't think this one has it. Uh, it shows two hundred and thirty-four or twenty percent of housing units are mobile homes. But it doesn't break out manufactured separately. But twenty percent of how, homes in the, in the township are mobile homes.
And what was the percentage? It was eleven, eleven, wasn't it?
Twenty, yeah, so two hundred and thirty-four out of eleven of forty-nine total.
Okay. So many. Gotcha.
So many minutes, yeah. It's twenty percent, I mean, yeah. Um, okay, last thing I was hoping to do tonight, um, is, uh, this again is the last master plan. And it was originally written in two thousand nine and then updated in two thousand fourteen and then also two thousand nineteen. Um, and then in appendix C, um, the people of Newfield Township did a SWOT analysis. So anybody know what a SWOT analysis is? Look at you.
No.
So a SWOT is S-W-O-T and it stands for strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. All right? Um, strengths, uh, so what are, what are the advantages of this thing? Um, what are Newfield's best attributes? How do others view the Newfield area and its existing condition? Weaknesses, what are areas for improvement for the area? Uh, what types of things, attitudes should be avoided? Opportunities, uh, these things are not happening yet, but could happen here. Um, so opportunities in which area, in which areas are the good opportunities facing? Um, what are the interesting trends that you're aware of? And then threats, um, these are obstacles to, uh, the township moving forward and, and having progress. So what obstacles, um, are there and? Okay, um, so the last, uh, master plan update, um, did one of these. And what I'd like to do, you guys are, okay, we kind of have a few minutes, if that's all right, I would like to kind of run through these, um, with you all and see what you think, is this, are these still things that apply? Are there any things that have been completed? Are there any things that, you know, um, the town thought in two thousand nineteen would be a really great idea, but now you no longer think there are? And, uh, yeah, so I'd like to kind of run through those.
Or is this for anyone in this room? What's the protocol here?
That would be up to me, I mean, that's up to the.
I think, I think right now we would do it with the, with the planning commission and that we would do this also in our public, uh.
Public engagement workshops.
Yes, like we get a diversity of opinions, I know you don't like to go, but I think, uh, better get something better advertised and get a larger sample.
And this, this isn't a SWOT analysis, we are just reviewing what has been talked about before.
I, I was merely asked that question because those SWOT analysis is for at the end of the article, or they actually updated more recently or where they ordered the original contract, because I understand if you're talking to the people who made that, when those provisions were made, all they did was data.
Yeah.
And demographics, they did not recompete any kind of community input focus groups.
That's correct.
That, yeah, that's my understanding.
So those SWOTs are actually from two thousand eight.
Nine, nine.
About nine when they published, so they probably collected before that and gathered it. So those SWOTs are gonna be lengthy and old.
That's why we're taking.
We, we, we've survived a few things since then, and two, three, nine economy collapsed, housing market tanked.
Yeah.
And everything has transpired since then, so that's why I just wanted to ask. Cause I, I do have pretty good knowledge of what's in there.
Good.
And that section of the SWOTs is old.
Well, so if you remember what I said from the beginning, we wanna kind of compare, take a look at these, see what has been completed, see what has not, see what's important, see what is not, and kind of, that's, that's what we're doing right now. We're kind of updating this list from the old to the new together, all right?
And I.
Together, you know.
Yes, and I'll encourage you guys to make your own notes as we go along, and when we come up to one of those public engagement workshops, we'll hash it out then.
Well, and we actually will do a, uh, a current SWOT analysis if you guys, I mean, that's, that's one of the exercises we can do. Um, we can do a current SWOT analysis if you, if you think that's necessary, so. Um I stopped at the library to make some copies and the librarian told me uh that there used to be a recycle center here and something went south with it.
Horribly wrong.
That's what she said actually, uh and so now she drives to um. What did she say?
Fremont.
Fremont, she drives to Fremont to drop off her recycling.
Yep.
Um and she mentioned that there has been some talk about uh about a recycle center, so.
Yep.
It's more of a.
Yep, it's it's ro- it's rolling, it's rolling.
Okay. So as far as strengths, um and I will say, uh when you're writing something like this, when you get older, put the year in there, let me put the date down, because this says the SWOT analysis exercise was gathered at a public meeting on June tenth. Of what year? So um as strengths, we have free garbage pickup. Is that still a thing?
It never was.
Never was.
I think they may be talking about um they may be talking about our cleanup day.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Alright, um so we have free garbage pickup, athletic fields and parks, open spaces and Fourth of July. You guys, you guys still have a Fourth of July celebration kind of a? Okay, um the river, canoeing and tuning and fishing. Um recycling is a is a strength um here. Do we take it off?
Uh we'll be able to leave it on once the center opens out in the parking lot there, but.
And that's very soon.
That is supposed to be very soon, I was talking to Nancy, she said they've got the dumpsters ordered, so should be here within the next couple of months. We are in that round.
Okay, uh the library, um restaurants, a strength?
Um it's improving, uh the uh the tasty treat in town was taken over by Taylor Bridge. Folks and they are going to have regular hours.
Okay.
Starting this week.
Yeah, they also tend to build it more.
Is restaurants something we could move to opportunities or do you guys still think it's a strength area?
No.
It's not, it's not a strength, um.
So we can move that to opportunities?
And the, it's it's fluid, it's it's the economy partially.
Sure.
Um but we only in strictly in the township, not in the village, we have the Legion that does their um public dinners.
Yeah.
And then we have Hightower, that's that's it.
Okay, but maybe there's more room for restaurants and commercial space right now, so that's an opportunity.
Absolutely. Yep.
Okay. Uh good people, honest, helpful and friendly, were they here? That's a joke. Uh that's let's list it as a strength, that's awesome, uh natural beauty, lakes, streams and rivers.
Absolutely.
Wildlife, hunting, fishing, bird watching, um and then recycling, two times a year trash day.
That's trash.
Okay? Okay, um that's where you can take like your computer screens and jump.
So we do, we do a household waste and other other, I guess you could call it junk, but not hazardous materials and recyclables like that, we do that twice a year.
Okay.
The county um conservation district does, puts on a hazardous waste pickup.
Okay.
In.
August.
August at the county road commission barn, but that's clear to heart, you know, that takes some schlepping for some people, so.
Yeah, right, yeah, okay. Um fire department and ambulance service.
We do not have an ambulance service, but we do have medical first responders on our fire department. They outnumber our firefighters at the moment.
Did you used to have ambulance service?
We did. It was it was housed in the old fire department in the village.
Okay.
But it was it was definitely a much faster response.
Uh road system and somebody, it just says road system and mapping, um but the road system is a strength here?
I mean, it's it's, we're able to pump a lot of money into the into the roads, keep them, trying to keep them from falling apart.
Yeah, Steve mentioned when I talked to him the first time that that was that was a strength here, okay, alright.
Yeah.
Um recreation, campgrounds, lakes, rivers, outdoor recreation, farmland, schools, rural community, small, uh local government is a strength. Natural resources, waterways, rivers and state land, um agriculture. Emergency services, fire authority and ambulance service, and I'll take off ambulance. Neighbor relation, safe neighborhood, good rapport from township leaders. Not bad, uh location, the location due to available amenities is a strength, so. Um yeah, that's what was that's what was there in the past, um we've kind of updated that list, but um when we do, we could make a SWOT analysis, uh one one of the exercises and then instead of, you know, we've taken the things out that don't apply anymore, but we wanna maybe add new things in that weren't here in two thousand nine, like you said. Alright, weaknesses, no senior center, that's still a.
Still a thing.
Okay, distance from shipping and county seat.
Mm-hmm, like I was talking, Hart is the county seat and it's a good from here, it's a good forty minutes there. And that's if you take the most direct squirrely route through all the back roads. I mean, it's forty minutes to go to the courthouse for for your forms and documents, you know.
Okay.
But there's not a lot we can, can't uproot the township and move it closer.
Is there, this says no junk ordinance, is there a junk ordinance?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay. And no dentist.
Uh that was an issue, then it wasn't, now it's an issue again, um the town dentist did, he passed away on us last year, he was my grandma's dentist when they moved up here from Detroit in the sixties, so if that tells you anything, he'd been serving for a long time.
Yeah. Uh a weakness, small businesses are closing.
Um they're not opening, um there have been some that have closed since two thousand nine, obviously. Um covid was not kind.
Yeah.
To small business in some aspects, it was very kind to some businesses in some other aspects, but.
Okay, so no, there aren't tons of new businesses opening, but they're, the ones that are here now are kind of maintaining?
I mean, there's there's your normal attrition to retirement and but the, I'm trying to think of economic standing that closed a business around.
Right.
Nothing comes to mind, can it, economic standing directly?
There's two new businesses downtown in the last year, I would say Brian Woods has this.
Yep, big skinny, yep.
And then uh next to my shop, Tricia has that.
Yep, yep, yep. Yep, so there are a couple of small, small startup businesses that are in town, but to my knowledge, nothing has, noth- the economic standing hasn't closed anything.
What I could think of would be.
Well, that wasn't, that that was, he had an exit plan, he wanted out to begin with.
Sure.
But covid sure didn't help, sure didn't help, so.
So maybe we could move this one.
Trust me, it may be, we're like Mr. Beckman mentioned at the beginning, we have a couple gravel coal mining diggers.
Mm-hmm.
Um how many, actually?
We have Hamiltons, they're down on one ninety-second.
Beckman's?
Beckman's, and then there was another.
Above Alco Pierce. Just east of one ninety-second, I don't know if he's active or not.
Well, it's not an economic aspect, it's an EPA aspect, but one right down there on ninety-two, it's been shut down for quite a while. EPA shoved him down, they haven't sold anything, they haven't done anything. I spoke with the owner, uh he's dead in the water, fighting legal suit, I don't know if you're aware of that.
I was not.
And that went forward.
Okay, thanks for the information.
Yeah.
But there there is something that doesn't even have to do with the economy, but yet.
Yeah.
Some way, shape or form, he came in, he had property, that was history before Iowa. He exercised, it got permits, and all of a sudden people who said yes turned around and one group said no, shut them back down.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure what what the tenuous circumstances he's in right now with that, but he didn't seem to please that much.
Can imagine.
I wouldn't want to fight the federal government. Uh so maybe we would move small businesses are closing um to threats?
Mm-hmm.
Alright. Alright, um road signs are a weakness.
I guess in what I I. So.
Depends on your age.
Um a lot still of the of the road signs in the county are the wooden posts, the four side, you know, the six four by four, six by six with the name of the road, you know, um routed into it and painted.
I thought they had most of them replaced by.
Most of them are replaced, I actually ran upon a couple not too well on my last trip to Hart, ironically enough. Um but most of them are now the green cross box style, so.
This one of them was major force change. It it would be nice to have in in other counties, other townships, um uh particularly when you have like a high speed road, well traveled high speed road like uh M twenty, like one ninety-second, um.
They have the road name before the road and.
Yeah, before you come to the intersection.
Yeah.
Um you know, where it's like, in nice big letters for those of us who are aged eyes that can see little letters this big.
So maybe better road signs, is there like a welcome to, there is, it is very a welcome sign and.
And then the township line, yep.
Yep, and then wayfinding signs a little bit, like I think there's a library sign, right, if I'm not mistaken?
In the village, yeah, um and then you get the ones that the that Matt puts up, you know, the big ones for the mate for the crossroads and then the um pure Michigan signs and.
Mm-hmm, so we may be able to take the road signs off the weakness list.
Probably, yeah.
Okay?
You actually don't have some roads that are even work still. There are some road signs that aren't even there.
True, um then they, it's probably one of those, they were there and then winter happened and they aren't there anymore. Um but those, I know there is a lot that um as there was a form when I was driving school bus, we had that we had to carry with us that on our route when we identified a roads road, it was road sign list, that was one there, we marked down the intersection. It was a resource for the county.
Smart. Uh a weakness, lack of technology and internet, still?
Uh so a lot has happened in the last fourteen years.
Yeah.
Um the power company that primarily services the um primarily services the township has their own fiber network in now. Um and they're still, they're still connecting people, so we can, I think we can take that off.
Yeah.
Um and the um the cellular coverage has come leaps and bounds. Um Denver Township just, the crown just got put on the Verizon tower that the Denver Township contracted in, so it'll be.
Be something.
Something in service soon, so yeah, I think that would definitely be a.
Are we giving it to the town?
So that tower will s- will serve the bulk of, will still serve the bulk of the township because it's, even though it's somewhat in a gully, it's a nice call tower.
Yeah.
Um they have on the tower on hundred and forty-eighth and Loop Road, there is um old Sprint um hardware on there that they are going to be, that they're gonna have to modernize because they're changing technologies, but so soon enough, if we still identify ser- like the lakes are still pretty dead, um but just gotta find, you know, get a carrier interested in serving the area, that's that's the hardest part, that's not the.
The fact that you guys are moving into new infrastructure, that's a, that that's at least going to be a strength if not. Um a weakness, ability to repair roads.
I still say it is.
It's it's one that, it's one that we are attempting to improve on, but the cost is astronomical.
Yeah.
Um the county will take care of their primary roads, but any of the other secondary roads and yeah, and tertiary roads, we're responsible for, and that's just, it's.
Okay, um alright, we can leave that on there, and then somebody put no senior activity center on there twice, that's still a thing though, right?
Yep.
Youth activities, Ball Diamonds Recreation Facility, that's listed as a weakness, what do you think?
So the, they're all in the village, it's.
Okay.
Or the um at the Legion, but they have it gated off and locked, so you can't use it, there's nothing.
Really?
Yeah, there's nothing, it's gated and locked, there's nothing.
So it's for games and practices, but not for?
I haven't seen it used in, I, ever, I mean, it's at the Legion, right behind the Legion.
I would imagine it's probably gated and locked because private property and insurance, everyone want to have liability, broken leg, kid struggling, you know, with an injury on their property.
Right, but I mean, they haven't allowed it to, like the the other two, two of the other Ball Diamonds are on church property. They'd face the same thing, but they're perfectly perfectly amenable to it, and they're ungated and unlocked, it's just go it, go whenever.
Okay.
But to my knowledge, I prob- I was probably a kid the last time I remember seeing it used.
What about any things like, is there a skate park or basketball hoops or playground, do I look at the school?
It's in in the village, I mean, there's there's Webster Park has a playground, Weaver Park has a playground, school has playgrounds and ball courts.
So that's still something that can be improved, okay, uh a weakness, lack of employment.
Still a, still a problem, I mean, it's, the school is the largest employer by far and then following right behind them is Ed's. You know, it's there and it's you, and then the.
Is it, is there an unemployment rate and all that dead in your old house or?
Uh I didn't do income, um I just did housing and and demographics, so. Um but yeah, there would be, but unemployment rate is gonna be a couple of years old. You'd better, you'd be better off checking with like the Michigan sources on on that kind of thing, because that's gonna be more up to date, you know.
I I was just asking because one can say that we don't have, sorry, I'm stepping over the line here with interaction. One can say we have, we have unemployment, but do we actually know who needs a job?
Right.
Have they identified what job they're in or are they even in or?
Right.
I haven't seen people homeless running around in a street corner uh that often.
You you won't, you won't see homeless, I would give.
It would be a metaphor or.
Yeah, well, no, no, it's, no, it's a true joke, I mean, I worked in a portable housing here for fifteen years. And homelessness and that is a lot different in a rural community than in an urban area. You have an awful lot of folks who live out in the woods and you'll never find them if you're not looking for them. Um. It's it's a much bigger problem than most people here would realize, um and that goes to.
And I may have been in error by saying homeless, because we started by talking about actual employment, but not.
There certainly is um, in talking to a lot of contractors here, um you have a gap between folks who have the skills, even basic skills, to be able to work for a contractor and what's needed in the industry. So you have, um as the trade people and trades are aging out, um there's no one coming up to take their place, which becomes problematic when you start to talk about housing as well. Um you have to work on building houses, but um employment has been problematic here for sixty years.
Hmm.
Um we had a creamery in town, we had a barrel company in town, those were all gone, we had a uh beat store in town, that's gone. You know, my gosh, um at one point there were, I think, five car dealers in town.
Wow, seventeen gas stations and everything, yeah?
Yeah.
Wow, but the times they are changing, you know, and the the concentration of jobs goes toward the population centers, Meskeen, Fremont, I'll go a stretch and say, even Nestle Gerber, you know, they were, it was always you could walk up to Gerber and get a job, now they are very selective, still, even though they're begging for workers, they are extremely selective. So. So.
Uh. Uh, weakness, nothing to keep our young kids here. Um, lack of industry, job opportunity, which we just talked about, and then a weakness is community awareness, I'm not. Not sure exactly what that is.
Perfectly vague and ambiguous.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm moving on to opportu- opportunities and threats, um, opportunity, senior housing affordable. You guys aware of any new, uh?
It was in, when that was being done, and again, I was still in high school at this time, so I'm going on what people have told me about the process. There was a group that was looking to bring it in into the village.
Yep.
You know, would be city water and sewer, closer to the amenities, close to the doctor's office. They had it right up to the point where all they needed was the village is okay, and half of the village council said, no, we don't want it, if they want house, affordable housing, they can go to Fremont. And they did, they turned the old high school into a senior, senior living center, so.
So that's still an opportunity.
Still an opportunity, that we would very much like to see.
Yeah, 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 um, I worked at AARP uh before this job, and yes, you do wanna see that. Because older adults have pensions, they have social security income, uh, they sometimes have savings and investments. And if the barrel company in your town shuts down, you still have that money coming in, um, with those older adults, so, um. Can be an economic uh boon for your town, um, opportunity, need jobs, um, okay? Um, a technical center, is there one of those here?
No, that, it would, I mean, I, I'm guessing based on what they're talking about, they're talking about like a vocational school. You know, the New Hego County Career Technical Center for juniors and seniors in high school, and then the next one would be Muskegon Community College for those out of. Out of school, but again, Fremont, Muskegon.
Yeah.
Or West Shore, Fluddington.
Yeah, uh, internet services, do you want me to leave that in opportunities, or do you, you feel like really that's being addressed?
It's addressed, I mean, it's, I mean, there's, there's about to be so much competition between, I mean, there's another fiber company running fiber up streets and.
It is.
So I believe that's pretty well addressed.
Opportunity, protect waterways and do conservation, um, DNR and DEQ involvement. Bike trails, walking trails, are there any bike trails or walking trails in the past since the master plan, okay? Um, and agriculture and a specialty farmer's market.
That actually sounds pretty cool, again vague and ambiguous, we did have, we did have a group that tried to do a farmers and craft market. Um, they're having trouble securing a location to do it, again, with the liability issues, and you know, trying to get, um.
Okay.
You know, just trying to keep, keep vendors.
Yeah, so, but someone is looking into that.
And. It's, it's been attempted the last few summers, um, oop, there goes my good pen.
Okay.
Um, I know they used the barn behind Mister Draper's store at one point, um, but again, that's.
Okay, um, Oxbow Park.
It's a beautiful posi- it's a beautiful, beautiful park, it's, um, it's, it's a great little, I'm gonna call it hidden jewel. Um, it's, I've spent, I just put a surveillance camera system in there because we had some vandalism, so I've been there a lot the last two weeks, and it is a. Beautiful little spot to sit at one of the picnic tables, listen to the river, um, kids, a lot of the promos last weekend, a lot of the kids had their pictures taken out there.
Is that a strength though?
I would call it, I'd call it a strength.
Okay.
Um, but still an opportunity because there's always something to do there.
Okay.
Um, I mean, it's.
More room for improvement and expansion.
It needs to be tidied up and, you know, the.
Okay, uh, opportunity, bring people to our area. Develop a campground, is there a campground here?
Yes, and and actually that, I guess that could be, be moved also, um, when that was done, um, I think it was called. Uh, River's Edge, when Turco's old and.
Old Mill.
Old Mill, um.
Yeah, because it was on the side of the old lumber mill.
Yeah, and, um, and now it's called River Rock, I think, something like that.
Yep.
Um, it's gone through, this is the second on, on since Turco's, they have done major upgrades.
That's beautiful there.
And they're planning to do quite a bit more, if they, if all goes well, they'll re- upgrade it to an urban site.
Wow, but that's in village, that's not specifically in the township, so, but it's on our township side of the village.
Well, at least two other campgrounds in the township that aren't in the village, I mean, there's one.
Oh, there's S- Sains Lake, there, you have S- Sains Lake up there on one, any second, yeah.
Okay, now. But twenty just passed my, my road, um.
Yeah, we're not that far.
T C M.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's a C M.
T C M, that one on the north side, twenty, that's around the mile.
So.
Yeah, but that one, that's already into the fair.
Oh, that's. That's in the fairytale township, yeah, yeah, just, but yeah.
Okay, alright, okay.
Both T C M and Sains Pond are membership campgrounds, those are not, um, like tourists.
But that's, but it's.
Man, it's, you know, T C M wasn't tourist one a couple of years ago, anybody could go there.
If you, you paid your, whatever it is, twenty dollar membership dues for, and then you pay your day fee, um, or you can get it, or you can.
Day fee. Yeah.
And you get a different day fee if you aren't a member.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you didn't have to be a member.
Yeah. Yeah, and I believe that is still the case, but they're pretty full up with their members.
Okay.
Um, the last time I talked to, uh, my uncle is the sexton out there, so I, he keeps me apprised of what goes on out there.
Um, Sains, it's all, I think most of those are actually like ownership.
Those are ownership, yeah, it's like. Um, so it would be nice to have a tourist campground, you know, have it brought in somewhere.
Yeah. Um, collaboration projects with the village or village improvement. You guys done any, anything with the village specifically?
Not that I'm aware of.
Was the library, was the, did you guys fund the library?
So it's a, it's a multi township, it's a multi jurisdictional, just like our fire authority, um, it's, uh.
Regional.
Yeah.
The, the library's helped a lot because it's on the New Hego side, so, um, and actually they'll even cross the line in the village.
Yeah.
The Fremont area foundation is, I believe, the largest. Private foundation in the United States, their assets are well over, they were well over.
Wow. Because of, because of Gerber, wow, because of Gerber.
Yeah, they, they were north of ten billion dollars.
Yeah.
Um, so.
Build a whole new town.
If, if they wished, um.
They have sunk countless, countless dollars into different projects, and they, they fund, um, they. They give a fu- a donation to the Fourth of July fel- um, celebration, our Christmas tree lighting in Webster Park.
Really?
Um.
Well, they built a library.
They pretty much, yeah.
Yeah.
But, okay, so there is some collaboration going on, that's actually, we could, we could move that to a strength.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I would also say that there's more collaboration going on now than there has been in the past.
Now that you're in both offices.
No, nothing to do with me.
Um. Camping, okay, and that was opportunities, maneuver threats, um, high taxes.
Which I.
They can shut up this year.
Yeah, yeah, we're new.
That, that, that's an, yeah, an economic.
Understood.
Thing of that, but, um, as a, as a renter, I can't speak to that unfortunately, so.
Yep, so, uh, the idea behind high taxes is that it's going to discourage people from moving to the township because the taxes are high.
The, the rate of taxes is actually in line with all our neighborhood cultures, you know.
It would be like the.
Our villages know higher than.
Okay.
But it's the first, the perception.
Yep.
You know, and the, especially with the, you know, the non homestead exemption, you know, the, the extra eighteen mils really hurts a lot of people.
Yeah. Yeah.
That.
Tell me why.
But, and if I live on my own land and I have my own septic and s- and well system, and it, yeah, you're kinda like. Why am I paying taxes?
It's, it's, it's also, um, we have a lot of lakefront property in the township, um, and, and a lot of. Uh, river property, riverfront property.
Yeah.
Um, anything on water has a factor. Um, when they do the valuation of your S E B and, and your tax collection, et cetera, um, so. You can have the same house, same acreage, et cetera, one is on water, one isn't on water, the one on water is significantly higher.
Sure.
Since we have so many on water, it's.
Yeah.
We're paying more because they're on water.
Okay, uh, high gas prices, I mean, that's not really a.
It was definitely a problem in oh nine, it was a problem recently, but that's.
It's not a problem of Newfield Township, that's, I'm gonna take that one out, but they're everywhere. Uh, foreclosures, is that still a problem, you playing that out, huh, no?
Okay.
Uh, losing jobs.
I don't think that's as much of a problem as it was.
Alright, weeds in the lake and zebra mussels, you guys remember the zebra mussel?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, it was.
Mm-hmm, um, weeds in the lake and zebra mussel as, as a threat, you guys see that as?
Well, it would harm, I mean, it would harm the natural beauty of the landscape and your ability to use it, so I can see that.
Exactly.
Uh, there's not a lot you can do about that because of the DNR and Eagle, so you're, you're really hamstrung there, so.
It's upon the last, uh, meeting over in, uh, New Hego, and it was actually, it's kinda timely, uh, it happened last season. Uh, the zebra mussels have sort of given way to the algae blooms, the algae blooms are big concerns in the lakes, and most people who are. Associated with lakes and have great concern, this was in New Hego County when I went over to learn about. Taking care of waters, waterway and stuff like that, they're, uh, they're basically forming not homeowner association, but lakeside association. Gathering money to bring professionals in to control the algae blooms that take place in the lakes in the area. Now, I don't, I haven't heard anybody, they didn't raise any red flags, says this is the one on other areas, but training was provided in New Hego, so. Or actually the white cloud where they went into the classroom, but that side, that side wouldn't make one on road.
One of the, one of the issues as you have increased development on the lakes, and that's where so much of our development has occurred.
Yeah.
Is that people go from. Um, a small little cottage, and you know, with one bathroom and a small septic system, and kind of weedy. Natural lawn, so to speak, to larger homes, better septic, um.
More, more runoff, more water runoff.
More water, more, uh, and more, more, uh, fertilizer runoff, and also more loading from the septic systems, um, it's, uh, um. Several, Silver Lake is probably the best example of that, where the lake has actually died because of all the development there, um.
So it sounds like that's a threat to add.
It is a threat, I.
Lakefront development.
You know, uh, we've had an awful lot of new and bigger homes going in on the lakes and, uh, have to load them up.
Okay.
When, when new homes are built though, aren't they required to come into code that is up to date with civil engineering practices?
It's, it's still, it's still, you still are adding nutrients into a system that goes into the lake. Even, I mean, if, if you break down, I don't know politely put it, we break down poop. You have nitrogen, you have carbon, you have phosphorus, you have potassium, um, and that goes into these, into the waterway. And feeds all these post lights and the algae and stuff like that.
So the, the White Cloud Sherman Utilities Authority, um, went through Robinson Lake. And you cannot have a private septic system on Robinson Lake anymore, you have to connect to the public sewer.
And that's what I was trying to add, where I'm aware of the material that you provided, because property mine in different states stood between the. And development and the Chesapeake Bay, and I had to put a retention pond in there to collect any water on this side. Prevent it from getting to that side and going down the stream to the Chesapeake Bay, even though it went through a forty eight or junkyard and collected all sorts of nutrients there. And wound up killing everything downstream, well, that's what I'm talking about, when, when new development takes place, I would think we would swoop in with our engineering and civil. Uh, capabilities and say, oh, we're not gonna allow runoff anymore, put a retention pool before it gets to the lake. On a huge stage, there's a certain places where you can't do it the way you used to, you gotta do it different, you gotta modernize.
Well, it's, that, that's why we're doing the master plan and the.
Okay, because it would be great, it would be great to have that ability.
Quite honestly, Joe, quite honestly, I think the solution, right now, we're not maximizing. What we could develop on our lakes because of our setback requirements, and in, in my personal opinion. I would pound the heck out of development, you wanna have five foot setbacks, fine, but, going to your point. Um, you will all hook up to, to a point, a, a single point of use.
Yeah.
System, so you're, for example, McLaren, um, you know, you could, you, there's two or three spots. Where you would have, you could be off of the lake, you're not low, you're not feeding into it, and you could be treating the effluent from the houses. And, you know, God bless America, you put a digester in there and, and off we go, we're not, we're allowing people to have their dream houses and all that. And, and we're not right in the lake, but I guarantee you, reporters, the people that are there right now would be screaming. They'd be here with a noose for, for men for saying that.
They'd be, they'd be calling for blood, because it's, I know when.
You know, because this is what we saw, as a taxpayer here, we all spent seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a couple of years ago. At Silver Lake, going back to Silver Lake.
Yeah.
For another study, it said the same thing that they said back in nineteen ninety nine, that you had too much development. Going into that lake, that you had to have a combined source system to get the, the, the stuff away from the lake. And no one, and the city of Hart offered people, uh, to hook up, they did their expansion at that time in two thousand. Um, people could have hooked up for eight thousand dollars per lot, and everyone go, I don't wanna spend that money, well, now they're looking at spending. Twenty to twenty five thousand dollars per lot, because they didn't wanna do that, but getting people to see that is really tough, it's really tough.
Yes. Yeah. Um, so I'm gonna kinda move through our list, cause I, I wanna try to get you, be respectful of time a little bit, but. Um, again, a threat, uh, somebody listed as young people leaving the area. Um, lack of funds to continue strengths, fund opportunities, pay for weaknesses and prevent threats, that's an interesting one. Uh, high taxes listed again, um, empty houses and people moving, it's not really a thing anymore, right? And do you see a lot of vacancies, I mean, the census is.
I mean, with, um, their, perfect example, a friend of mine, uh, the house hit the market, it was in the village, house hit the market Friday. We walked through it Monday afternoon, it sold Wednesday morning, so that's really not, I mean, it's the, it's the market as it is right now, but. It could still be a problem.
So can I say, depending on the market?
Yeah.
We, we can do that, um.
West Michigan Realtor Association unemployment case that right now, there's a housing shortage across the nation. While we are a really subset of it, we have unique attributes here, I don't know, if, if there's a vacant place that was livable, I don't think it's gonna be vacant for long.
No, okay, um, future employment is a threat.
Or the lack thereof.
Yep, do you think that's still an issue, yeah, people, okay, uh, lack of farmers, is that an issue here right now?
Uh, lack of farmer, farmers, yes, lack of farms, no, I mean, the, it's all pretty much two farms that. All the plots that you see, it's two farms that tell them up, it's either Slater's or it's Norris's, it was, you know, it was, what's that? Bees, bees, so.
And heritage.
Yep, but there's, I mean, there, it's, there was Silver Sky, there was Dalias, there was, there wa- you know, X was one, now it's Slater's, you know, or, uh. Heritage, but.
Really only two in the area.
Maybe others. Maybe others.
Three.
Three or four, but it's, it, there used to be so many, it was, everyone had a farm, yeah, but.
And that was well before my time. Okay, um, so, I mean, having more, you know, rather than just a handful of you.
And a diversity thereof, yeah.
Um, threats, all levels of government, somebody doesn't like you guys. Uh, I'm gonna cross that one out, cause I think you guys are pretty okay, but, um, but, yeah, uh, let's, we'll stay out of the weeds on that one. Um, people are afraid of change and progress, that's a threat.
That's, that's a problem everywhere, but it's, it's the, it's the NIMBYs, you know, the not in my backyard. And I know that my, my, uh, my grandma ran into the sink, she lives down in Grand Rapids and there was the. Developer tried to buy every house on the road and there were three of them that said absolutely not, so the. The whole opposite side of the road is completely, it's parking lots and shopping malls, and it was homes. You know, it's, it's, and I can understand, you know, one of my, one of the homes owned by my family is gone because of that, but.
Uh, this is listed, taxes high, economy poor, some unable to pay. Would you say the economy is poor here now, today, currently?
There are, and again, I'm not, I'm still finding my way through local government, there are mechanisms to help with, help with that. So I would say that that's not really a threat.
Okay.
But, the high tax bills on the indigent and or the, or, and you know, there's, there's exemptions, there's credits, there's, I mean, there's. So there's mechanisms there, so I don't think that belongs there anymore.
Okay, and then, uh, employment opportunities, no new money. Uh, there has been, there has been some employment, new employment into the township. Is that, I mean, we wanna continue that, I I was here for one meeting and a guy was talking about moving here for like, moving a summer or something like that. Do you think employment opportunities, no new money, do you think that's a threat, do you think that's like an opportunity?
I just think employment, employ, employment opportunities in general. The, there's, you know, it was pushed for years, go to college, go to college, get a degree, get a degree. What can I use my degree for? I'm a hundred and forty thousand, well, I'm not personally, but I'm a hundred and forty thousand dollars in debt. And I can't get a job in my chosen field, I'm working for fourteen dollars an hour, you know. It's just employment opportunities in general, that it's not necessarily that.
Um, but let's say, uh, living wage.
Mm-hmm.
Alright. Alright. Okay, well, that's, I mean, that's all I have, uh, for the list, but it was some really good feedback from you guys. It helps to have you guys to, um, you know, give the the local, what's going on on the ground. Uh, what what business is, um, you know, not there anymore and and what, uh, so, yeah.
I have one question about something that I thought I heard, maybe it was quite your correcting, but. When you were describing the, uh, type of housing and the number of houses available. Did I hear you say there were four, uh, four hundred and fifteen vacant housing units?
Four hundred and eighteen.
Four hundred and eighteen?
Four hundred and fifteen.
Four hundred and fifteen vacant housing units?
Yep. So probably, like Steve said, that may take into account the village, um, and it may take into account the zip code as a whole. You know, or, you know, so that, that's, we don't.
And that also would take into, could take into account seasonals as well.
Right, cause they're not.
Because if they're, um, a lot of times, most of this is done by the census.
Yep.
So if the census person comes out and there's no one living at a place because it's a seasonal and they're out there in. Uh, November or they're out there in February, that probably would be considered a vacant home.
Sure.
Four hundred and fifteen, I mean, still even with that criteria. Sounds like there's a lot of, a lot of vacant homes out there.
Yeah.
So I'm just a little, little confused about the lack of housing.
Oh, you're not alone. I'm, that, I mean, the.
If they can identify four hundred and fifteen with it, then that, you know, challenges, it'd be some seasonal on the lakes and stuff like that.
Right.
Uh, and that, that number confusing me, that's all, that's all.
Yeah. Francine, you had something?
So I have a couple things and you don't have to go into great detail, but the RC, the R.
RRC.
RRC.
Yep.
Is that verbiage from the state of Michigan? Because of the additional funding that we will be able to mainly get.
Yep.
Is that gonna be in the master plan?
Oh, yeah.
And is there a link to agenda twenty thirty? Does agenda twenty thirty filter down into the state of Michigan?
I don't know what agenda twenty thirty is.
No, I have a question, no, it does not.
Okay, so that won't filter down and then we'll be able to see what exactly that is. To to get the additional funding.
Yeah, um, basically.
Could I say one?
Yes, do you? Um, so basically, when you apply for grants now for the state of Michigan. They are, in all of their questions, they're gonna ask you, like, was this project mentioned in your master plan?
Right.
And if you can say yes, on page seventeen, we talked about the group community really wants a new park or really wants a new trail or. Canter, whatever, um, that that's in line with your goals, it's something you've been planning out and planning on. And yeah, they'll, they'll fund that more likely than someone just saying, again, we want a splashback, you know, why not?
But it wasn't in the original, uh, the latest amended master plan, but now it has to be to get that funding?
It is meant to be, but we were strong.
But it wasn't for, okay, and then number two, I'm gonna talk about the elephant in the room. So the marijuana jobs, any of that has not come up tonight at all. I'm getting a little confused about that.
Well, didn't you want to be a zoo?
Yep.
To be going on to see Francine?
I didn't, I'm, I'm talking more, so I just have a little.
So I can answer that, that would come up in the community workshops, cause this was, I mean, I, I kinda let this get a little bit off the rails. This was supposed to be a conversation that the commission had with the, with our vendor.
Okay.
To to get started. It was great to have input, it was great to have a dialogue. But there are meetings where we will specifically have that and we'll gauge all of that information. Um, all of the feelings, pro or anti. Oh, ass, it has to, I mean, if it's going, yeah, yeah, it will, it will.
May I ask a question, the feedbacks on that?
Certainly.
You spoke of the, and I can correct me if I'm wrong in summarization here. It seems as if there's gonna be two focal collection points, the, uh, all your community inputs. Which may come in various electronic paper, called community outreach.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's the steering stakeholder focus group, which is the selected focus. Is that input equal and, uh, compared to the same criteria? Uh, is it going to be weighted seventy thirty, eighty twenty? What's the algorithm behind your creation of the product that you've been purchased?
Um, so I think I understand your question like, would we ask the same questions in the survey that we would ask in a stakeholder meeting?
To some degree, the question had to be worded a little differently when you talk to the community, because.
Yeah.
They're not empowered with the ability to sit on that side of the table.
We wouldn't.
But whose, whose decisions carry the weight?
We wouldn't, uh, we wouldn't.
Community, whether it's fifty fifty, see what I'm saying?
Yep. Um, we would do a survey and wouldn't ask those same questions to the stakeholder. We would come up with an exercise, like, like I mentioned, we might do an updated SWOT analysis with the public. Um, and, you know, we, so, yeah, we, we would have an exercise, but it wouldn't be. It wouldn't be like we would put out the survey and then we would come to a meeting and ask the same questions on the survey, that would, that wouldn't be helpful. So when we write up, um, like a public engagement summary, that goes into the master plan, that's very early on in the master plan. Um, we'll talk about the survey, we'll talk about, you know, people said this, people said that, and some people said neither. And we'll move through that and then we'll talk about the workshops separately. So, um, you know, we'll talk about the, we helped two public engagement workshops and out of those workshops, we heard citizens say. And we'll put that in there. So wouldn't it be like, um, we would give more, it would all go into the master plan? We're not gonna give more weight to the survey or more weight to the public engagement events, that's all public engagement, it's all part of one thing.
Well, I think what Joe's looking for is, is the public. Input going to be considered as much as the stakeholders' input.
Very well put. Or will the public input, as we went through this list from twenty, we we suspect it was two thousand nine, two thousand ten, two thousand three. And we either accepted or dismissed some things.
I think the board is gonna try to make sure that everybody's voice is heard in the master plan.
Absolutely. Yeah, uh, the first thing that Steve said to me when I talked to him, um, he wanted to have robust public engagement. Um, and he, the, the, the planning commission paid extra. Three thousand dollars for an extra public engagement, uh, event that they did not have to purchase. Um, but it's, that's been, that's been part of the whole entire process.
And and that's why, that's why we wanna have it at different times.
At different locations.
At different locations and food, to bring.
And as many as possible.
And and to bring as many people out as possible.
And that's, that can be your role as well, you know, you guys can put the word out there and and get, we, it's, it's. You know, we need that whole community and we need people from the schools, we need people from the third, we need people from the banks and the wherever, you know. Um, because without that, we're not hearing the voice of the whole community, so.
Thank you for your interest, we appreciate you coming.
Yeah, thanks, why not?
Go ahead.
Can I ask you a couple of questions? Um, so first off, my name's Jim Draper and I own two businesses in Newfield Township, one's in, uh. Bought a bunch of property, run out of buildings and fixed them up and there's old shops in there and stuff now. So, working on that, um, I did make note of, of Mr. Teldt's question on the four hundred and fifteen vacant houses. You know, and and we got housing crisis at the lake. My house I bought was a bank repo, it was just totally trash, you know, and 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 fixed it up and repaired it, I don't know what condition these vacant houses are, but.
Yeah.
You know, there's four hundred and fifteen, how hard, I'm saying, those housing crises.
And again, what constitutes vacant to the census, that's, that's.
Yeah, I mean, I know there's one on my road that's a real nice little house that's vacant.
Yeah.
But anyway, so I had that and then you guys were talking about like playground and they're all in town. To have one in the township, where would you even?
Exactly.
Put one that would actually serve the township, you know?
A park building.
Yeah.
You would.
Yeah.
And and other towns do that, other rural communities do that.
Sure, but they wouldn't have a population, I mean, anybody in township that drives to Asperia.
Yeah.
Playground's five minutes away.
True.
Um, right?
I'll go to park with a playground in it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's, I mean, that's.
Actually, um.
And people could come to have picnic lunches and stuff like that.
Actually, the board is looking at, um. Um, along with some private, uh, donors. Um, at putting up, um. We have someone who wants to donate a pretty significant amount of land. And, uh, looking at a multipurpose type of park. Um, where there would be like a, a dog park and ball fields and, and, you know, a pavilion for for family.
There's a township on the other side of the state that where they, that's, they have, the township owns a hundred and eighty acres. Uh, which is their township hall, the fire hall, the police department, a pavilion. Uh, I mean, I mean, there's, so there's ball fields, basketball courts, tennis courts, yoga pad, there's, I mean, so there's. There's infinite, infinite ways in which to go, but the pocketbook is only so big.
Yeah.
And and public interest is only so big.
Serious, I went door to door, everyone has dogs.
Yeah.
You need a dog park.
Um, there will be, I will say, there will be a dog park by the fall in town in Asperia. At at the far end of Weaver Park, um, it's gonna be very small, about, uh. I think thirty by forty, something like that.
But still a good little spot for.
Um, but, no, um, the township board is looking at that, um. In answer to your question, uh, Mr. Draper, townships, we're all townships, but let's talk specifically about that. Have kind of a continuum, um, I can't add township campgrounds. Um, that might be on a river, uh, or a lake, um, they're lovely, they're as nice as a commercial campground. And the township makes a couple dollars on them, uh, every year, um, because in the resident services. Um. Just out on the outskirts of Michigan City, Indiana, um, there is an incredible township park. Um, they talk about a dog park, um, it's actually, they have two dog parks, or two sites for the dog park, one for little dogs and one for big dogs. Um, as a day user, I pay three dollars. Um, if you're a resident, you can buy a year-long pass for, I think it's eighty-one dollars for the year. Um, so there's a continuum of options, you know, from, from nothing to, you know.
Yeah, uh, and I'll follow this, a hard trail from here. Uh, well.
Sixteen miles?
Sixteen miles, so about twenty minutes, so I mean, if there was ever someday that you guys could plan to connect.
Yeah, we could work together with Shelby and Ferry Townships to put up like a, like our own little north country trail.
Yeah.
Serious, I live in Grand Haven.
Mm-hmm.
At night, the social thing to do would be to walk the boardwalk. You've got a beautiful river.
Yep.
In the town.
Yeah.
But the dam and it connects, why not expand that and?
It is being expanded.
Huh? It's just junk behind that log mat?
It's, uh, it is being expanded, the, the village, the village is going for something called Sparks Grant.
Yeah.
You're right, right.
Yeah.
Cut, um, which I think, uh, I think that's actually, um.
The squeaky wheel.
But but, no, my car could be a Euro, if you maximize your water.
Oh, yeah.
Your bike has, get people up here, go buy ice cream, go to his shop.
Well, look at the difference, just look at the difference between downtown Asperia and downtown Shelby.
Mm-hmm.
Downtown Shelby is up there, it looks like crap. Quite, I'm, I'm not living Shelby, and I'll say that, because there's no water.
Yeah, maximize.
You know, and and here, we have beautiful parks, there's. Right now, the village has, I think, four or five hundred thousand dollars in grants coming. Um, which would be used towards, uh, towards some of the park improvements right now, there's gonna be new playground equipment. Um, and I get confused, because every stinking park is a Weaver park. There's fiber Weaver and Weaver and Weaver Weaver.
And Webster, no, there's Webster.
Oh, no, Webster's something different.
Oh, Weaver Weaver.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I call it, this is Webster, um, cause of the.
This also, it's what we were talking about earlier.
Weaver's is one of the stars in Asperia, okay? They were the original.
The Weavers?
Yeah, the Weavers were. Um, they had, uh, no, um.
On the rivers. But if we, if we were to mention that in the master plan, if people came up with that idea, hey, we wanna put, you know, a walking trail along the river.
But but that's.
Then, when you go to apply for a grant, you can say, yes.
That's the RRC.
Have, have any of you been to Oxbow recently?
Yeah.
I should have, but not recently.
Because where the scout hall is and where the pavilion is, there's so much more park past it. But it's all scrub trees and down trees. It's, and that's one of, and like, that's one of the things that I noticed when I was, I've, like, I've been out there for twenty-one hours, the last two, over the last two weeks, putting in cameras. Getting the cameras in, you go, hey, someone made a walking trail here ju- just by walking through. But now there's this tree down across it, so I, oh, Dennis is gonna hate me, I gave him a huge, a huge list for Oxbow Park. But it's all, we, if we have them, if we have them in our master plan, things that we wanna do, we wanna maximize and expand. You know, I, no offense to the people who put the last master plan together, but they, they were satisfying a requirement.
Right.
Yeah, no, no, that's, that's exactly it.
And we are both satisfying the require, the legal requirement. And we wanna put, we wanna put our heart and soul.
We want vision for the future, yeah.
It's depressing to hear all this, to be honest, we, we, we moved up here from Grand Rapids.
Mm-hmm.
And this whole thing is rather depressing, we didn't know all this before we came here, but. If you can maximize the waterways and your natural resources here, I think you'll bring people here.
Absolutely.
You've got the beautiful sports shop.
Mm-hmm.
People love that place, but it's concerning, you could really do something.
And there's something to be said, maybe, again, you know, um, it's like the city of Free. And there's something to be said, maybe, again, you know, um, like the city of Fremont, the Fremont DDA and the Dayton Township and what was Sheridan, I wanna say. They all kinda created a authority, you know, a su, you know.
A development.
A development authority, and they put together a master plan for what all of these different stakeholders wanna do. It may not be the worst idea to put out feelers to do the same thing for.
Well, it's, um, they also have a tip up there too, Jack's increment financing authority.
Ooh, which we don't have.
Oh, I know that, yeah.
So, honestly, I wanted to mention, uh, my employment thing. Um, so I was just talking to a contractor today, that, um, you know, he can't find anybody to work, and he's willing to pay the money. And he doesn't care if they have any experience, you know, you can teach people how to repaint, measure, and pour. Uh, so now, he's got his white kids out there trying to get the jobs finished up, because he can't find employees. And I know there's other, uh, contractors and other businesses in the area, like the city, you know.
Yeah.
The hair and trucking, um, you know, I know he couldn't find employees, and he might have wanted to retire too, I don't know, but, you know, that shut down. Uh, so I don't think there's necessarily a lack of jobs, and like you mentioned Fremont, it's fifteen minutes away, you could go anywhere and get a job.
So, I'm, so, uh, to that, at the hard, at, standing at the hardware store, something that I'm either out of stock on, or they think is too expensive. And I say, well, ace in Fremont, oh, I don't wanna go all the way to Fremont. Fifteen minutes.
Right.
I go fifteen, I'll go fifteen minutes to get dinner, like I'm gonna have to tonight, cause that's as closed, I'm gonna have to go to.
I just drove to Detroit today, cause that's where my con was.
Yeah, you know, it's, it's, it's a mi, it's a mindset thing, and I feel. As a latter generation millennial, I'm embarrassed for my generation and the next generation.
There, there, there is.
We are, we're concerned.
There, there, there has been a lack of jobs historically.
Historically.
Okay, my son graduated.
I mean, it's the.
From, from Asperia High in nineteen ninety-four. And so, and every single one of his friends who, who wanted to better themselves, left the area and are not here. They're gone.
Mm-hmm.
We've had this for a long, long time.
And I'm gonna go back to the college, college, college push that everybody.
Not even there, I mean.
Because they go to the bigger cities to go to college, and they, and then they land there. I mean, I haven't, I haven't, I'm here, I'm, I'm a business owner, I'm a business patron, um.
But yeah, if you got a degree in psychology, we might need that here a lot, nobody's paying for it.
Well, it's, it's, uh, there's some of that, um, but even, um, I, you know, I can think of, you know, my son is in the military. Um, so of course he was gone. Um, and one of his best friends, uh, wanted to go into, uh, law enforcement with the FBI, so of course he's gone. You know, because locally, they, particularly at that point, there's not much either going on, and it's changed a little bit. But that's, it's been a long-term problem, and, and, and you're right, so who has stayed? The people who stayed, with people, quite honestly, from, like, from Aaron's graduating class, I think there were seven who stayed.
Wow.
Six of them, I wish they would have gone. Yeah, but be honest, you know, I remember not, uh, upstanding citizens, all the good kids left, because they had ambitions, because they wanted to better themselves. Now, maybe in twenty years, they'll be back here when they retire.
Right.
Um, but, um, it, it has been historic, um.
I'm just saying, it's not currently, I mean, I could get a job, I, I, anybody could get a job in this township, make a point of it, they want it.
Yeah.
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 It's not currently a problem.
But it's, and it's the, it's the, it's not my field, I ran into that, you know, the, it's not my field, but. It's going to keep my lights on and food in me, you know, but it's, it's the mentality thing, so. Um, anything else for us, Jeff?
I don't think so.
Alright.
Great, uh, great discussion.
Yeah, no, this was, this was very nice. Um, there's already been plenty of public comment, but is there any more? Are we good? Do we need to discuss anything?
Bring your part right here.
No, I don't.
Wait a minute.
You too.
Oh, Steve, do you have anything for us? Rick wants to go home.
The best part of the show.
Wait at least forty minutes worth of stuff.
Gee, I just lost my quarrel.
The only thing I got is cleanup day, June third, um, from eight till noon, basically, uh.
The dumpster.
That's the waste birthday.
Why you bring our dump around?
And, um, we do have, uh, uh, someone volunteered, one of our, our bros volunteered a truck and trailer. To pick up stuff for people with disabilities.
Yep.
And, uh.
I got a dump trailer.
Or, or seniors, and, uh, um, so that is something, it's an option. Um, I do have flyers that I was gonna print out.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if folks wanna put them up, and we'll have that in the highlights.
Are you gonna post an ads on the boardroom?
Absolutely.
Okay, otherwise I would.
Where, I mean, it'll be posted anywhere and everywhere.
Yeah, usually, I've been putting it myself, it adds in at the laundromat, and letting other folks do some of the other ones, but, yeah, um.
Will, will you take, we have paint cans with dried up paint?
Can't.
Uh, if it's, if it's dry, you can, you can take it if it's dry, it's not hazmat.
I, I know, but the company will.
Okay, the com, the company has their, yeah, correct.
They will.
Um. If it's dried, you can put it right in your garden.
What, you can put it in the regular?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Take the lid off, put some cat litter in.
You can, you can dump it on the ground, and you can roll it back up and put it in the trash.
Yeah, if it's, if it's dry.
It'll dry out.
If your trash man takes it out, bury it somewhere in the.
No, I don't mind with that.
Alright, um, then if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Robertson, supported by Ferris to adjourn, any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, three zero, we are adjourned.